Like I said, you and that Brady was. Good evening. I am calling this meeting of the Tacoma Public School Board to, um, it's a study session together on October 20th, 2022. And we will have a call to order and, which I just did, I guess. And now we're going to stand up and do a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Tacoma Public Schools, good morning. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are all on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage on their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. Well, welcome everyone tonight to our study session with a focus on our legislative agenda for 2022, 2023. And first of all, I'd like to welcome Katie. Good, can, uh, welcome to your, I think this is the first meeting that you've been sitting at the table. So our deputy counsel, so welcome, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
And I think, and of course Charlie Brown, who is our legislative government affairs person who we work with to move our agendas forward with both at the state and national level. And we so appreciate all of your time with us, Charlie. And so I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent who can talk a little bit about what tonight's going to be about.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so tonight we're here to preview your legislative agenda. And I just want to take a little bit of a, a quick moment to talk to you about how we come to this place tonight. Um, you have a representative, Director Keating, who's not able to be with us tonight, that works with Charlie, myself, and a small team throughout the summer, um, throughout the session to identify what are potential key things that we need to put a heightened focus in on. And, um, we go back and forth. We talk with community partners. We talk to frontline staff. Uh, we look at latest issues and we try to identify some key points, not exclusive points, but key points that we want to continue to focus in on and help what we think will help our students and our community continue to thrive. And so we wrestle through those, we put together a draft and we bring that draft to you. And then your action is, is to review that draft. If you're, uh, in support of it, great. If you're not, you give us some feedback. What does that look like? And then we bring you back a final, uh, agenda for your adoption, which tentatively we're scheduled to think about even as next week, um, in there. Um, during this, this is not an exclusive process that doesn't allow us to respond to other things. Um, so these are unique things to TPS, uh, that we have surfaced as high priorities, um, but they may be in common with other Pierce County school districts. So we spend time with other Pierce County school districts. We spend time with other municipalities to say, are these common pieces as well? Cause we try to focus in on those as well. And so you'll see some things that are not only important to us or in our recommendations, but to others inside the community and the county. And so with that, I'd like to formally introduce Mr. Charles Brown, who's the president and founding partner of Cascade Governmental Affairs. And Mr. Brown works with us and other school districts to help us, um, not only develop these agendas, but then to navigate and champion them throughout the legislative session. So take it away, Charlie.
Thank you very much. And it's very nice to be here. Thanks for the invitation as always. Um, uh, as, as, as Dr. Garcia noted, um, we have been working over the course of the summer and part of our development is not only internally, but it's also externally. And in fact, we were on a call with the Pierce County superintendents and the superintendent for public instruction, Chris Reichdahl, just today at about 11 o'clock, walking through what, uh, the OSPI is looking at for their legislative agenda as well. And oftentimes we work to, uh, mirror a little bit of what they're doing, especially on the big items. Frankly, we try to push them to support the items that we as school districts want, uh, because at the 11th hour of any legislative session, it's usually the superintendent of public instruction or their legislative liaisons who are back behind the doors, working with staff to make sure stuff gets done. And we've seen that to our, uh, school districts benefit very directly in past legislative sessions. So I think it's critical that we're partners with them, helping them do what they want to get done. And then they in turn turn around and help us get stuff done. And I think that, um, our OSPI is very well aware that we work in partnership with them, um, not, not, uh, in conflict. So, uh, as, as Dr. Garcia noted as well, um, the way we structured this in the last several cycles is to have critical district issues that really are Tacoma issues that really address Tacoma's school district and the needs that we have. And then you've got, uh, issues of high concern that, um, uh, also have a impact on the school district, maybe not as direct, maybe is not as high of an impact, but they are important to, uh, those districts around the, around us. And frankly, I think that we have seen a lot of, uh, success over the past several years by having all of the Pierce County districts and some of our, uh, King County, uh, friends joining us. Uh, when we're all coming in together and the legislative delegations see that we're all working together, those issues tend to rise toward the top. So, um, that's part of why we do what we do in, in, in this thing. And then that high concern also includes our work with our community partners, uh, all throughout, uh, the city and county, uh, as well. So, uh, you'll notice that there's going to be a provision in here talking about community partner, uh, support. And it's certainly not exclusive to the group that we, uh, highlighted in there. I just put it really as a placeholder, uh, for the time being. I reached out to a number of those organizations to find out what they're doing. And they laughed and said, oh, we haven't quite decided yet, but we'll let you know. And so I think it's just those opportunities. They call us as well. So I appreciate that strong community support that we get. Um, so with that, I will, uh, start the briefing. This is a statewide election year and, um, election day is November 8th. I think this is important for context because we're not sure exactly who's going to, uh, be on various committees yet. We don't, there's a number of legislators who, uh, decided not to run for reelection this year. So there are a lot of new faces that we're going to see. Frankly, after the last two years of COVID, uh, there's a lot of faces that we haven't actually seen in person because most of those legislative sessions are most, most of, well, I guess the last two legislative sessions have been, um, uh, virtual. Uh, there are 10 United States House seats that are up for election this year, one U.S. Senate seat. Uh, the, in the state of Washington, uh, the, all 98 house members are up for election every two years. And then, uh, this year we have 25 of the 49 senate seats up. Senate seats are a four-year term. Um, there is one, uh, seat that was appointed and that happens to be ours on the 27th. Yasmin Trudeau was appointed into the senate seat when, um, the, the previous, uh, Senator, uh, Jeanie Darniel, uh, stepped down to take over at the, uh, takeover position at Department of Corrections. So Yasmin is up, uh, this year. Yasmin is a graduate of, uh,
Three plus.
Yes. And so I've had some really fun conversations frankly with her. Um, so in terms of, um, legislative makeup, we do expect Democrats to maintain the majorities in the House and the Senate. They currently have those majorities right now. Um, they're 57 to 41 in the House and then they're, uh, 28 to 21 in the Senate. The Republicans might pick up a seat or two, but it, it certainly won't be enough to, to flip the majorities. And I fully expect to see our own Lori Jenkins to maintain the Speaker of the House of Representatives here, um, in this next legislative, uh, cycle. Oh, I guess I went the wrong way there. Um, so the session begins on January 9th. It's a long session. This is when we adopt a budget. The legislature adopts a budget. Uh, they gave 105 days for that. So I expect the session to end, um, probably around April 15th, give or take. Uh, they will be facing a, a operating budget in the realm of around 66 to 70 billion dollars of state funding. And then you add federal funding on top of that. This is actually a pretty large, uh, state in terms of, uh, the, the amounts of revenues that flow in and out of the state government. Our capital budget, we expect about a three and a half billion, maybe, uh, close to $4 billion, uh, capital budget. A lot of that just goes toward buildings, uh, as you all know. And, um, one issue there on capital, just as a highlight, which will be an issue, uh, for the operating budget this year is an $800 million request from DSHS to fund, uh, Western State Hospital reconstruction. And, um, I think that the Senate is, Senate capital budget chair is considering asking the operating budget for that money so that they can get it going right away without hampering a lot of the other, uh, uh, capital budget requests and, and projects that are out there. And then on the transportation side, um, they'll do another transportation budget. They just recently adopted a 16-year transportation funding plan. Uh, I think that each biennial session, they'll go in and modify that plan according to revenues that are going to be flowing into that from, uh, the recently passed environmental, uh, uh, laws of low carbon fuel standards and the Climate Commitment Act. So gives you an idea of, you know, a pretty big, uh, undertaking with those budgets like that. Um, so let's go ahead and jump into the critical issues, the, the state, uh, the Tacoma Public Schools legislative agenda. Um, I put on the screen, the issue itself and then the solution. Um, I think that all of you may have seen a document that has some, um, more discussion about the issue in it. I just, uh, for clarity's sake, didn't want to give you about 40 different PowerPoint slides. So we're doing it this way. Um, the Maritime Skill Center, I think you all know, is a top priority issue, uh, for the Tacoma Public Schools. And there's a lot of, uh, school districts around us that are very much looking forward to participating in this. Uh, the, the request will be a capital budget, uh, request to build a new facility, uh, for the competency-based Maritime Skill Center in partnership with the Port of Tacoma, uh, to support all of the South Sound area students. And so it may be that we're working with, uh, Federal Way or some of the other school districts, uh, in the area as well, not just Pierce County. So a number, that's a number one issue. I have spoken with, um, Chairman, uh, Steve Theringer about that, uh, request. He was aware that it was coming because, um, we did a pretty good job of trying to, uh, forecast that in the last legislative session when we got the funding to start the, uh, development of that, uh, facility. Any questions on that one?
How much are we asking?
At this point, what we're, uh, shooting for is a $12 million request, uh, from the state. Uh, the Tacoma Public Schools has a, uh, significant amount of money to add to that as, and then we're hoping that the, um, Port of Tacoma, uh, will be able to identify and, uh, offer us land that, uh, we can put it on. So it would be in partnership with them and we'd be coordinating with Port of Tacoma as well as the Northwest Seaport Alliance.
Thank you.
I don't know if my question would be for you or probably for Josh. Um, what jobs will students be able to jump into from this center? Like how will it benefit the city as a whole?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we've been working with the port and the port has done, uh, employment surveys and identified five big buckets, uh, in there. So one, and I don't have all five, so give me a, a little grace there, but, uh, advanced manufacturing.
Okay.
Um, so, um, they're actually in the process of, they're moving a new boat builder into the port. And so what is advanced manufacturing? That's a lot of, uh, welding, uh, skills, uh, engineering, things along those lines. And so we would be building out a pathway inside of that. Carpentry is, is, uh, as I continue to learn, the jobs of the tide flats, uh, and that's what it's really about is the, the jobs inside the tide flats, which is not all port oriented, but the port is the galvanizing agency that helps foster that. Um, transportation and logistics. So logistics has been a fascinating field that is starting to escalate. And, and so that's not just about, uh, loading things up in logistics, but the planning and repurposing. So, uh, as I learned this week, um, you have these massive containers that we all see. Uh, right now they're being shipped off into these small warehouses, large warehouses, as we go up 167 and these other pathways. And they're all being repackaged with goods from Alding's, put them in another train, uh, container and then shipped out on a train. And so the whole idea of logistics, and so there's a computer science to that. There's a green sustainability arm, uh, around. So what does green and sustainability look like inside of the maritime industry? So those would be some examples.
That's really helpful. I feel like when the average person sees Maritime Skill Center, you think, how is this going to impact me? How is it going to impact community? Why does this matter? And especially like with the budgetary cost and we're saying we might have some funds on our own, but we're asking the state for a certain amount. Those stories will really help. Um, most people understand why it's so important for our community.
I appreciate that. I feel like we also have a responsibility to ensure that our kids have access to those jobs. And the best way to do that is, is to be a part of that ecosystem. Um, and so, you know, uh, we've been in some really positive conversations with the Port of Tacoma. There's, uh, tons of work still to be done, uh, but they know we're here tonight and we know, uh, that is not a surprise to them. And so we're working in that direction.
Thank you.
Director Niall, did you, I see your hand.
Yeah. Uh, you mentioned there's other districts interested in, um, contributing or working on this with us, like sending their students and then hopefully maybe they would also, uh, contribute some funding for this Maritime Skill Center. You mentioned some other districts. We haven't had the conversation about them contributing funding, but a skill center is generally a facility where a number of school districts participate. They do send their students. The funding follows the students into that skill center. So the operational side of it does come from the students that they might send. So there would be ongoing operational funding in that arena. We have not asked any of the other school districts to participate financially in the construction of the building at all.
Typically, school centers or skill centers take a long time to get up and running. Um, and, um, there is not a shared responsibility that comes to the table before the state ask. So we've been really working hard to make sure that we are contributing members of this conversation and that, uh, that we have a business partner like the port that is also willing to contribute. And so, um, the ask that we have from the state is not designed to be a holistic ask to pay for everything. It is an ask to contribute to get us up and running.
And, and I'd just say that I, um, night before last, last, I can't remember what night it was, but
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Boy, I'll tell you, it's been a week. Um, I went to the Propeller Club where they were, um, hearing a presentation from our own Adam Kulas about this. And there was nothing but enthusiasm and, um, frankly, a lot of hands up, how can we help from the members who, you know, represent all sorts of businesses in the port area, plus, um, you know, there's some of them are port staff, but there also were chamber people and other people there. And so there is a, a huge recognition. Um, and Adam did an, an excellent job and, and, but I, it adds to the fact that there's a huge recognition that this is a pathway for, um, employees in the future for, for the, for, um, the, and for Tacoma. Um, because the port is such an important and critical contributor to our economy, um, that, and it really, you don't see it, a lot of it, some of the things that, you know, I mean, you're not really aware of that are port generated. But, um, and what we, what we know is, is that all industries are having trouble finding personnel. And so this is part of planning ahead and getting that pipeline going. And there's a lot of enthusiasm. So I think we'll have a lot of partners, um, helping us get the message out.
I want to make sure that it was that at the core of what you were asking.
That's what I was asking, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, fully funding special education. Um, special education has been on our agenda for years and quite rightly. The legislature has not been able to keep up with the actual cost of special education. I think we all know that. And I think, um, this is a unique opportunity this year, uh, to really highlight that. We got about a hundred million dollars, uh, additional money, uh, two years ago in the, uh, operating budget for the 2123, uh, cycle. Um, that was based on a $300 million shortfall from, you know, statewide estimates. Um, this year, the upcoming 23 shortfall, uh, is likely, as it's estimated by OSPI to be about 450 million dollars. And then the next, uh, year's shortfall is in the 560 million dollar range. This is, you know, real money, right? And I think that the legislature is recognizing that, uh, they are not, uh, meeting the, uh, requirements of funding basic education. Uh, special education is basic education. Um, and I, I was, I just got a, uh, comment from Senator Rolfes, who's the Senate Chair of Ways and Means today, saying that she had been substituting in a, as a para in special education classes. She's very interested in what is going on. She has a much better idea now that she's been doing that. Um, so, um, I, I thought that was really fascinating. Um, I, I think that, uh, what we're, what we're talking about when we talk about fully funding special education is not necessarily just go in and give us everything we ask for, but let's update the funding formulas for special education. Take the cap off the, uh, number of students, the 13.5% is kind of an arbitrary, uh, number in the first place. And various districts are going to be above and below that for various reasons. Um, and then update the, uh, funding, uh, apportionment for, uh, these students. We got a little bit more last year when we asked the legis, or when we worked with the legislature and more of these special education students are, uh, being incorporated into the, uh, general population, which is a good thing for both the students and, um, for, for the special education students as well as the student population as a whole. Um, but we do need to see, uh, a, a much higher, uh, number there. So we'll be working with, um, the, uh, other school districts. We'll be working with the delegation and, um, OSPI to see if we can't, um, put another, um, I'd like to see a whole 950 million dollars, um, over the next two-year cycle. If we could do that, that would certainly help Tacoma School District and offset some of the, uh, costs that it otherwise carries with its local levy that we could then free up for more enrichment, uh, opportunities. So it's a big deal. And I can tell you that every school district across the state is very interested in working on this issue.
Getting the argument here.
And you'll see some patterns from some things that we've continued to have to advocate for. So, um, some of these may not be new topics for you in, in the years past and so.
Question, I guess. Uh, the numbers of special education kids, uh, in total is increasing. Um, and is there a rough estimate of how much of an increase we're getting each year over the past few years?
We are capped by state law to qualify special education students. So, uh, we have, uh, that in itself is a challenge and one is part of the proposed solutions. Um, so we can only get reimbursed for so many of the kids.
And if we, we have more, we're just not getting reimbursed.
Those were, yes. And you're not getting reimbursed to the full dollars that it costs to support those students.
So that's what the lifting the cap piece, the suggestion.
That would be one element of it.
One element of that.
Yeah. But is there an estimate of how many more students per year we're getting? Uh, the general population for us is probably the same for the whole county and state. The numbers, the numbers are going up. Didn't know if any, that was a known number.
I have questions about that. With, because of the integration of special education students into the, um, general population into the classroom. So a lot of them are integrated, like teachers in the classroom. We have students with 504 plans, IEP plans, but they're like in the regular classroom. So I think sometimes when you ask a question specific that way, it kind of, your question might be asking about how many students are in just purely special education programs, but like every student may have a special identifier while they're inside of the typical classroom. And that's from preschool all the way up.
I think that if you're asking the question of how, what is the increase overall of students who, um, qualify for special education on a statewide basis, I don't know that number. Um, and in fact, I've been on several calls where we've talked about special education, but the, um, the numbers I believe are going to get reported out in November is, is what I understand. So I don't think there's any way of, well, I shouldn't say it that way. The last couple of years during COVID really threw things off. Um, but I think that we're going to see in November some numbers that, um, uh, are higher than what you would have seen in the 2019 school year.
So Enrique, maybe to accentuate your point, I noticed that you mentioned, um, the, the anticipated shortfall for this 2023 year is 300 million. And yet for 2024, it's anticipated to be 500 million. So that's almost doubling. So it's just like that, so somebody is anticipating.
It, it tells you that there might be more students going into the system, but it also tells you that the, um,
Cost of.
Cost of doing it is a lot higher too. Um, and I think that some of those numbers also include the, um, expected, um, inflation increases that, you know, otherwise get paid. So education's labor heavy, right? So inflation costs really impacted.
No, that's great. Thanks for that.
I think the cap is 13.5%, a maximum of 13.5%. And I've heard, so in the spirit of this and not scientific, I've heard the number of two to 3% is a reasonable lift that needs to be addressed statewide. Um, I don't know if that will happen or not, but it kind of gives you the, the essence of how complex it is and what we may be looking at as far as increased numbers.
Okay. That helps. Thank you. Another critical issue is the, uh, learning support services for whole child. Tacoma continues to lead on whole child issues and, you know, certainly the work that the district has done, um, in partnership with, uh, with, uh, Metro Parks and, and others to provide before and after school, um, opportunities for kids. And so we're going to continue to go in and, uh, advocate for, uh, funding that was, that can be made available so that students have activities, you know, whether it's boys and girls clubs or whether it's, um, uh, uh, you know, some other, uh, entities, private entities that, you know, can partner with the school district. We, uh, I think we're really fortunate when we partnered up with Metro and a couple of years ago, we're able to get language that allowed for, you know, a single licensure. Took forever, uh, as bureaucracy sometimes can do, especially in some of those old legacy agencies, but we were able to get there. And so we've got something on the ground and we'll continue to push for that because it's the right thing to do for the kids. And, um, where we've got opportunities to provide that assistance for the overall growth of the student, uh, we should do it. So.
So Charlie, uh, is this the way this is worded? It's a little, it's, it's not particularly clear, but is this supposed to be for beyond the bell and, um, uh, or is this?
It, it's not, it's worded pretty broadly.
Right.
Because I want to use every opportunity I can to stand up and say beyond the bell. Uh, breakfast before the bell.
Before the bell, okay.
The.
Breakfast after the bell.
Breakfast.
We're starting to mix terminology. So it is, it, there, what we didn't want to do is, is beyond the bell is a Tacoma piece. And so when you use language like that, it really, it makes it Tacoma specific. Um, we also recognize that what's intentional about this is for community partner, opportunities for community partner agencies. So we're trying to be inclusive and also drive others to say, community partners should be coming into schools and doing this work. And there, but the, uh, challenges statewide is, is there is not a systemic funding source to support those folks in that work. Now, what we know is that is critical, right? That is critical to youth development. That is critical to mental health opportunities. And so what we're trying to do, and this is another one that's been on our agenda for a while, is just to say, as a school district, you have, we have to advocate on behalf of our community partners to bring resources in to compensate folks for that time, to build that ecosystem. And so it's vague like that because it doesn't say K-12 should do it. It says this is a critical issue that we believe in, in that shift. It says this is a critical issue that we believe in, in that shift-to approach, and that could include opportunities for before-school or field trip days. So we're not trying to limit it, but beyond the bell is a separate conversation around nutrition services and, or excuse me, breakfast after the bell.
Follow-up on that, I'm reading it and as a provider, like a before and after school provider, as a preschool provider, as a childcare provider, there's a lot of funding that gets put into professional development that doesn't really trickle down to the actual person providing the labor to do the work. And then the professional development piece, that's where a lot of the funds get put into, but then how does that really relate to someone who's highly skilled at their job, highly competent, and they could have done that research on YouTube for free, but all this money gets collected, but it really doesn't pay out to the provider? Although it is a very critical piece of these providers and what they do, I think that a reason why a lot of the providers fall away from these programs and they don't step up to do it in certain communities, especially in rural Washington, it's because all of the money's in professional development and not into paying providers. So I appreciate it, and I think that it will pass, but just as someone who gets impacted by these type of laws and bills all the time, it really doesn't correlate in a way that's reasonable.
So the beauty of this or the challenges is just what you articulated, you know, so even when we are advocating for resources to go to community agencies, we don't administer those resources. And what we've heard from a broad audience that we wanted to include in this is that it's, you can't just create a funding source without allowing folks to have resources for quality improvement. And so we're trying to be good partners in this conversation to say, you know, a lot of folks, even with our colleagues, are like, why is this one of our critical issues? And so you see that it's one of our critical issues in Tacoma, but maybe not a shared one across the board. So we're trying to be responsive to some of our community partners that believe that professional development should be a funding piece. Our primary focus is around dosage.
Yeah.
And being able to get people opportunities for provision. But as Charlie's mentioned, you know, each one of these, and I have to continue to learn in this and not get excited about a trigger word on there, what we're trying to do is get a bill started.
Mm-hmm.
And then the real magic of that is what happens inside, how, I think of the after-school, how a bill becomes a law?
Yeah.
Keeps on replying, and the language, and so even you folks, and what is your role is Charlie may be reaching out to you and saying, look, I need somebody to come in that has some experience in here and testify in this experience. Or Charlie will say, I don't need you to testify, I need, and that's me included. And so the piece of this that's really critical is that we spotlight the issue and we get it worked, and then what I'm trying to articulate not very well is then the real magic of the sausage-making really takes place.
Yeah.
Which bill is it, how, in there, and so, but our primary focus is to make sure that there's somebody in front of that child that is high-quality that can continue that work.
Makes sense.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. I agree, that particular statement on proposed solution was a little wordy, I had to cut it down for the presentation.
And in that spirit, I'm sorry, Charlie, send us your language this next week, right?
Yeah, if you have
Especially, you know, your expertise, and if you think like this is the language that is used in this world that will help and solidify it, we'd welcome that. So that's, we're, that's the point of tonight. So you can send those directly to me and I'll get them to Charlie.
Okay.
Prototypical school model funding update, the prototypical school model is essentially the framework that the legislature uses to drive $26 billion worth of state funding to K-12 education and, in the last, by no budget. The model itself really has kind of been on hold since 2017 when the McCleary decision came down, and legislators want to try and let that whole thing kind of settle out, and I think there was a kind of a good-faith agreement by most legislators and leadership that they weren't going to make many changes. They've made a couple of changes, one big one, 2018, that we were a part of on the local levy part of that, but they, for the most part, haven't touched, you know, the number of students, teachers per student, school teacher-student ratios. MSOC generally gets increased, but it hasn't really, haven't really gone back and truly looked at it. So what we're asking for are increases in the funding for support staff. It is, it's a formula, but it doesn't work in real time, and I think you all know that. I think that you understand that, you know, you have to have several janitors per building, you have to have nowadays a nurse per building, we hope. I know that nurses' number is going to go up again this year and some of the other stuff that we were successful in getting last year, but we need to go in there and really take a look at this. And the funding for our administrative staff, whether it's building-level administrators or principals and others, or assistant superintendents, or whether it's folks on the day-to-day operations of the district, those numbers really need to get increased and changed so that you're not continuing to carry those funding costs for actually running a school district using your local levy money, which we want to use for enrichment for the, all the other stuff we want to do. So we're going in and asking for these changes. I think there's going to be, I know that there's going to be a push for this as well. What I can tell you is that when you put special education together with a transportation funding update and then some of the changes that we're talking about here in prototypical, we are getting into the one and a half to two billion-type numbers. Chris Reichdahl today said that his overall package is closer to $4 billion because he's asking for everything, which is the right thing to do. What he's saying is, think about what your education system's going to look like in 20 years, and if that's what, you know, if you invest now, we're going to have the best education system there can be. There'll be some negotiations going in there, but that's kind of what we're looking at. So some of the biggest issues include this prototypical school model funding modifications. And since we're going into a year where they have to look at, in that McCleary decision in 17, they agreed that they would go back in and look at the beginning of the 23 session. So this creates that opportunity for us to really go in and look at those things, so. If there's any questions there. I recently did a whiteboard demonstration of education funding for some people, and well, it's about 50 different places, and you do this and this happens, so that's what we're doing, we're going in to play with the
This is not a question, more of a comment, but I think it's so important to think about these topics here with regard to really physical and emotional health of the kids, because they all, what you've covered in here covers all those, right? Custodians and security, those are secure, safe building, and your psychologists and your nurses. And, you know, our partnerships with school-based health centers are so important that we have right now. We have McKinney-Bento unsheltered kids. We just had a kid brought over from a different high school to the Mount T High School to get care, was unsheltered, had re-engaged in school, hadn't been in school for a long time, had all kinds of medical problems, psychological problems to attend to, and this kid is going to get good help now, but there was a liaison that drove him over, you know, and without that and the follow-up of everything else that happens from that, this kid is not, would have a very small chance of succeeding. So I think, like, that's a story you could tell to some legislators to say, like, this is why it's important. One kid has time, but there's, these lives aren't just numbers and percentages.
That's a good, that, thank you very much for telling me that.
So at this point, those are our TPS critical issues, and then we're going to shift in and the issues of high concern, I think it's safe to say that these are shared more broadly. So as you think about other school districts that we're trying to work in partnership, it's not to say some of the other ones aren't. The prototypical is going to be an advocacy piece for all across the state, special ed all across the state. But we try to work with others to say, what do we agree on, what can we focus in on? And so these are some of those issues that are more broadly.
So it starts with student transportation funding. This does impact a lot of districts across the state. It has a partial impact on us when I know that we continue to use a third-party transportation company to help with the majority of our transportation. But here also, the special education student transportation falls under this thing, and that is underfunded as well. So we want to work on that to fix the system that's been broken and widely acknowledged as broken by the legislature over the course of the last six to eight years. So we'll be working on that. We also have a situation where the state employee benefits exceed what we had been, exceed what we've been given in state funding to cover those costs, and so we're trying to get as much as we can for those additional benefits, trying to cover that delta. And if they extend it to all school employees, school bus driving employees, we want to make sure that we get that so that when we're going to negotiate with our third-party provider, that those funds are there if they're required to cover those staff people. So it's been an issue that we've been dealing with over the last, we have testified that we absolutely want to get that funding for those drivers. We don't question that. The question has been, if the state's going to dictate it, then the state needs to pay for it. That's what we've been asking, so. Any questions there on student transportation? The regionalization funding reform, this is not something I think that impacts us so much directly, but it does impact our wider community. Pierce County alone has three different regionalization factors. We all hire from the same labor pool, and we would like to be able to see that all the partner school districts that are right around us, Fife, Clover Park, Franklin Pierce, others, also have that opportunity for regionalization funding because it costs the same to live in Pierce County, just about anywhere you are. And we want to make sure that our opportunities for funding across Pierce County are very similar across the school districts.
Question?
Yeah.
So we do have some smaller school districts very close by, just wondering, like, do they support this initiative as well?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. And as long as they're pushing for it, then it's easy for us to just be like, we're here to lift them all up?
Yes.
And this is one that's specific that, you know, we could remain silent, you know, but we are, it's important for our kids because our kids are connected in some of the smaller communities in Pierce County, our kids are mobile in Pierce County as well, and, you know, it's good prevention, if you will, if they are able to hire high-quality talent. And so this is a team approach, and especially these, the Pierce County school districts are pretty united.
Yeah.
And we work really hard to say, what are these issues of high concern that we all agree on? And so this is very much representative of a more holistic county approach.
School Employee Benefits Board, I think I really touched on that, that legislature provides a certain amount of money, and then the Benefits Board goes out and decides how much they want to provide in benefits, and if that money is more than what the state's provided, then we end up picking it up because it's mandated. And so we want to see the state actually provide the full cost of state employee benefits, and that should be extended to our locally-funded employees as well as our federally-funded employees. So it's really kind of a request of the state that if you're going to set up these benefits on a coordinated basis, which they agreed to do about, well, in 2017 with the McCleary decision, then we expect them to pay the full freight. So, questions? And did you notice that nearly 400? I did not update that number, but I think this document's been sent to, or to Roz, and so she didn't say that number's wrong. We have 400 employees that are not, that we're having to cover out of local levy, that more enrichment that we're going to have. On dual credit, credit in the high, college, in the high school, there's a big push this year, I think by OSPI and others, to step up and say that if the students can do the work and they get the education in high school, then that ought to carry forward into their, as college credits, and they shouldn't have to pay an astronomical amount just to have the credit transcribed. And so we're going to continue to push for this issue. Tacoma's been vocal, we've been very, we've testified on it, we've been pushing on it for a long time, and I think there's more interest in doing that this year, so.
This is one I anticipate, it'll be very interesting. I think we'll see some pressure from higher education, and I think we'll see some pressure from, pushback to, once again, put it back onto the local district. That's what I, going on the record, I think that we'll see those kind of pushback, so, you know, what does that mean from an equity perspective? So you may be having to think about how much you want to support this work and what does that mean for our kids.
Is this like one of those issues that, again, we are a larger district, we have a bigger budget, but we're supporting this because all types of districts deserve this? Or is it because it's just something we want to do?
I would phrase it as, is we feel passionately about all kids should have this access. And one of the things that we have tried to invest in is programs that are consistently applied across the district, right, that all kids can have access in. And we know that there are other opportunities that we still want to afford there, but we don't have the resources, and we don't have any control or influence on how much those cost.
Yep.
And so we believe, and others believe, that kids should have this access. If they can do the work in their 11th and 12th grade and meet that performance, then why would we not start to advance their college experience?
Do we currently pay for the cost of the credit for these kids?
No, there's been, back in the day, there was opportunities for school districts to work with universities to negotiate that and really provide experiences. And there was a bucket of resources that was allocated at the state level. That bucket has then been repurposed to very much smaller grants. And so there is still opportunities, if you're, live in a community that has these factors and it is a science class, then you can do that. And so there's it in there. But other than that, then the responsibility lies on the individual, without, per se, any kind of governance on if you're free to reduce or non-free to reduce. And so we've continued to be using the arm of the AP and IB tests because we can ensure that everyone has access to that.
So in addition to the cost that you're working on with this, a secondary issue is that some of the universities give you a credit, you can pay for the credit, you get the credit, but it doesn't go into credits that count for your major. Like if it's a class in your major, they count it as an elective credit. It doesn't actually count to help you, it might in some peripheral way allow you to graduate from college a little quicker, but it doesn't count for the major. Like a chemistry class doesn't count for your chemistry class in college. Maybe it'd be good to tie these two together because that's a reason why some people don't take those classes, and the other is the money. And maybe the colleges, the universities can think about, the other side of this is maybe, that is a stimulus, someone gets some credits, then they're more likely to maybe want to go to school, right, and enter into their college specifically. They've probably thought of that, but I mean, if there's a way to maybe discuss that as a stimulant for more kids going. You see, you understand that point about
I do understand that, yeah, I absolutely do.
Yeah, that is a problem.
That is a, that's a discussion that has started in Olympia. There's There's silos, it's interesting, the K-12, and then higher ed is a wholly separate committee. And, you know, they kind of do their thing, and we try to do our thing, and then when we start getting in on their thing, they kind of get upset. And so we're trying to break those down. And you're exactly right. If, we should be having those discussions on the more direct level about if it's a chemistry, it should count as chemistry no matter what. What we're trying to do at this point is just to break that down, and I think it's a question of equity. I think that any student, no matter what their background is, if they can do the work and they've qualified, then they should get the credit. And the higher ed institutions, some of them are really good about saying, we'll take them because we want to, you know, get these kids, even if we only have them for two years instead of four, let's get them that degree. I think it's an equity question because I, the very fact that we're having a national debate about, about student loan debt and forgiving it, and the fact is, people are coming out of college with way too much debt, and we're trying to reduce that debt. And when we're lucky enough to be able to provide that kind of an education, we've got the students to do it, then we ought to be able to do it, and those students shouldn't be hampered later on in life. So there's all kinds of pieces to it, but getting that conversation, their enrollment is lower, higher ed's enrollment's lower. They're gravely concerned about what that means to their budgets, right? So there's a lot of tension all the way around.
Yeah, and I want to be fair, they have done work as a state to try to unify in some of the credit experiences. The challenge becomes is that's if you're a state-funded school or a community technical college versus a private versus out of state. And so to affirm the complexity is either a parent or a child, and what does that promise really mean is challenging. Some states, Utah off the top of my head, they've narrowed the cost and put in legislation, schools cannot charge more than $65 for five credits. So they're trying different ways, and there's different models. So for us, once again, it's.
Starting a conversation?
Well, this one's been, yeah, I think it's, it's the continued conversation. We've been trying on this, we're optimistic there may be some energy in this, but it's not just unique to us.
Okay, anything further? This is the, kind of a placeholder right here, our community partners' work, and again, it's not exclusive, so if anybody has any suggestions of other entities that they want to add to that, I'm happy to take it, and.
I do, I do.
Okay.
So, how did you know?
I knew it.
So, you know, as I've mentioned to you before, this is fabulous, and you've got half a JMAC on there, but we, the Joint Municipal Action Committee is actually, we're asking all of our members to put in a generic language, very similar to this. So I just would say, rather than maybe listing individuals, you know, I don't know, somehow we get the JMAC agenda in there, and I can get you some language about that. Make sure that we're all aligning our work, and we want to make sure that we're supporting each other towards this, towards our target goals.
Anything I can do to help with drafting of it, I'd be happy to.
Which is great, so I just remind folks, you can send those directly to me, and I can get them to Charlie if any of you have them. And so we're hoping to bring this back to you next week.
Right.
And so it's a little bit of homework, it gives you some time to process there, but, and if we're not ready, we're not ready, that's okay. And you can let me know that too, and I can share that with the, or you can share it with President Bonbright, whatever you feel is comfortable. So we're not trying to rush through, but we are trying to get ahead, and we're also trying to use our agenda to say, other partners, here's some things that you need to.
Like the Maritime Skill Center.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I wanted to move over into capital budget because it's a big deal, right? We've got a lot of buildings, and so we constantly need to update those buildings. One thing I don't have on here, but I will be talking to legislators about, is the upcoming requirements for energy efficiency for our buildings and energy use intensity, and then what it's going to cost to, and how we're going to fund new HVAC systems, if that's what it takes to reduce our energy usage. So capital budget's going to be a pretty interesting arena this year. But the supermajority for school construction bonds, more than a perennial issue, this is a decadal issue that we've been working on. I remember back in 97, 99 timeframe, we were able to get the change from supermajority for school levies to simple majority, and that has been, you know, a terrific thing for school districts across the state. We started working then on supermajority for construction bonds. Those have been more of a challenge. We've gotten a bill to the Senate floor in the past, and only to see, unfortunately, various amendments get tabled, and then the final vote not, you got to get two-thirds out of each body of the legislature before you can even go to the voters for a change. So making a constitutional change is no simple thing. So we're going to continue to do that. We thought we had an opportunity to get a bill to the House floor last year, but for various reasons, we didn't. So we're going to keep working on it.
We're extremely fortunate in our community that we have such tremendous support. I think our team really works hard to do respectful buildings and try to make sure they're on time and on budget. But this is also one that is hitting a lot of our local communities very hard. And it's really hard if we don't stay on top of, you know, we all know that the state doesn't provide us enough even to maintain in there. And so we're trying to be respectful, and we're grateful, but this would definitely help the whole region out.
And there's a lawsuit now on school construction, the Wakayakum lawsuit, which is starting to make its way through the courts, which is a lot like McLeary. And basically, the argument is for Wakayakum School District, very small district over on the coast, they can't even pass their bonds, you know, they get 49% when they do it. So what they're saying is that the state is failing to meet basic education because they won't even give us the building to put the kids into. So that, that has some legislators scared, should. Has me scared because if the legislature lets us go, goes all the way to Supreme Court, then they decide that they're going to take over school construction, then your ability to actually design your schools to what your communities want might get hampered. So there's, there's a lot at stake, frankly, in this arena.
Can you say the district again?
Wakayakum. W-A-K-I-U, Wakay, no, K-I-A-K-U-M, Wakayakum. And that's actually a county too, so how about that?
I'll look it up. Thank you.
You're welcome. You ever driven through Wakayakum County? It only takes about 20 minutes.
From here?
Well, you got to get down to Pacific County first, you got to go down to, all the way down, yeah.
I'm from Tacoma, I have no idea where that is.
It's along the Columbia River down on the coast.
Gotcha.
The school construction formula modifications, the, the, the school construction also has a formula, of course, and they pay a certain amount of money per square foot for construction, and then they pay a certain amount of construction cost. And so, you know, it, it's a way of saying, if you've got this many kids, you're going to have this many square feet, we're going to pay you for that, and then we're going to pay you, you know, $100 per square foot. Well, the cost of construction certainly has gone up over the course of time. And then there's, they calculate, the way they calculate square feet per student, it's actually the classrooms and not, it doesn't include the halls. So if you happen to have wider halls so that kids can move around and get to classrooms, you don't get, you know, covered for that. So we've been working on trying to modify this over the course of time, and we'll continue to need to do that because construction costs continue to go up. And the needs of schools and education have changed over the course of time, right? You've got a lot of labs now, you've got computer science rooms, you've got, you know, other things that, you know, may not be otherwise recognized. So it's another way of letting the state know that it probably needs to add a few hundred million more dollars into school construction formula modifications. So that, that one's going to take a while, just because once you start moving more money into school construction from the state capital budget, then less money is available for other community projects around the state. So we continue to push.
So Madam President, I promised Charlie that I would try to get him out of here, he has another obligation, so are there questions for Charlie? We can continue the conversation.
Jessica, thank you. Thanks for letting me interrupt and ask all the questions before the end.
Absolutely.
It's the best way to do it, going through one by one there.
Well, I think, I think, thank you, Charlie, for all your forethought on all this and all the hard work you've been doing over the past years to set us up in a positive way, especially for the Skill Center, it's going to be Maritime Skill Center, I think this is going to be exciting. So, yeah, let us know.
And then I'd like to keep you for one or two more minutes because we want to just talk with you, a couple of updates. There's no action, so we don't have to amend the agenda, but I wanted to let Mr.
Not you, Charlie, who wants to hear us.
Brown sneak out.
I want to say thank you to all of you for your support of the work that I get to do on your behalf. Education truly is some of the most rewarding stuff I do, it's a big deal, and I really appreciate that you let me do it for you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll just let you take over that.
Wow.
He's having fun. Give him a toy.
Thank you for all you do.
Absolutely, good to see you.
You too.
Give me a call anytime.
I will.
Thank you, sir. So this is the beginning of, obviously, the process. I want to echo once again, if you have feedback, please give that to us, we'll take that feedback, we'll help process that, we hope to bring you something. And then there'll be some activities that, as we go through, but then, you know, come the calendar year of January, I think it's on one of the slides, we get busy. And then you'll get back into your cycle, where Charlie will be giving you updates, these are the hot bills, the bills of high that we need to pay attention to, these are the ones that were okay, and so we plan on keeping you very informed and engaged throughout there.
And I also, I would also like to have a note of thanks, I know she's not here tonight because she's on a plane flying back from, for work, but to thank Lisa Keating, Director Keating, for the incredible amount of time, energy, and effort she puts in as our legislative rep across the board, both with WASDA and then with, you know, it's just a full-time job, really, I mean, it just never stops during the year, legislature's out, but she's been working with Charlie and Josh and others to help craft this, so a big shout out to Lisa Keating.
So I, I put, I'm going to put the other Lisa, Lisa Nolan, Dr. Nolan, on the spot a little bit. You see right on your tables, there's some cards.
Are these the ones from Carla's last study session that she talked about, or different ones?
Different ones.
Okay.
They are different ones, but I wanted, and I was talking with, a little bit with President Bonbright today, just about several things, and then I, I've gotten to experience these cards a couple of times in the recent days, and I thought it would be important that you just get a quick briefing of what are these cards and these questions that are taking place because it's rippling through the organization. So I'll put Lisa on the spot and say, what did you help us create?
All right, thank you. So to, you said, quick and brief, and when you're passionate about something, it's hard to be quick and brief, but I'll do my best. First, I'd like to set the stage and say equity has been a focus for many years in this district through the manifestation of behaviors, strategic conversations, and cultivation of, of helping people learn and grow. Last year, however, district leadership participated in a year-long team-building effort monthly with our TEA Tacoma Education Association partners. So district leadership and TEA leadership coming together for the purpose of building camaraderie, building up our team, and building some shared energy around areas that we'd like to collectively focus on and just learn from one another. And one of the outcomes was this collective impetus to move forward in co-creating equity and developing it more thoroughly. Last spring, we identified questions that we would use in five schools as a pilot, built around equity. We got feedback from those schools, middle school to high schools and a couple elementary schools. And we used that shaping, that guiding to develop a plan for this year with a focus on monthly questions focused on equity, designed to influence perception, perspective, shape attitudes, and shape behaviors for the purpose of learning and growing collectively, celebrating differences, and rowing together in the same direction for the purpose of getting along, being respectful of one another as adults, and recognizing that each individual, each student who comes to our organization deserves the very best we have to offer regardless of what they look like, regardless of what their socioeconomic status is, and regardless of what their zip code is. Each month, whether you're a school principal or a program director, you will lead your team through this question and pose a challenge that you'll see in the cards. And I will tell you, in September, the focus was listening because how can you develop your own lens of equity if you're not a good listener? And nearly everyone in our school district, except for one department, and it was because of an issue that was unrelated to something we could control, completed it in September. And there's survey feedback every month that the leaders fill out so that we understand the highlights and the experience that happened in that specific location. And we're now into vulnerability for October. The concepts get a little deeper as the months progress, and it's specifically designed that way so that we can build trust throughout the year, and by the time we get to the end of the year, be in a space where we're able to speak our truth with respect and dignity, and listen with respect and dignity, and once again, shape those attitudes, beliefs, and the behavioral characteristics that manifest on a daily basis. So this is something we're very excited about, and it's district-wide, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, that's, and I, by no means are we saying this is all of our equity work, by no means are we saying that this is the only thing that we're doing. But I just wanted to, I wanted you to have a chance to see them, feel them, and I'm sure that you're going to hear folks talking. There's numerous things, and we'll find time in future work studies, I think we already have one in the, in the spring that we've kind of initially countered to give you some additional updates. But I just thought it was important that, before it went too far along, that you got a chance. And I want to thank Lisa, and Lisa's been leading and championing the team to help us get to this place, very collaborative, very much folks at different levels having voice in what this looks like. And there is, there is an expectation that we all participate, and so, you know, you're welcome to use them, you're welcome to.
We can keep these for us.
Those are yours in reference, and so, and I'm proud of each staff member that comes with who they are to these conversations and be a part of them. So I'm going to stop there and honor your time, and.
Okay, and I just have one other, thank you for that, and thank you, Lisa, these are great, and I'm thinking, already thinking of ways we as a board can, can use these in our retreats or in just different ways. It's kind of along the lines of what we were talking about.
Maybe JMAC would like to use them.
And you know what, I would love to take these to JMAC. You know, you guys are ridiculing me, but let me say we are getting shit.
We're not ridiculing, we're fully leaning in with support to say, like, this is how we start collaborative community conversations, why we've given our spaces and that.
It is true, this is, this is really amazing. So, thank you, I love it. And I was also flipping through and seeing how the conversation questions, I mean, the topics are just a lot tougher in the, near the end, I mean, truth, discomfort, power dynamics, I mean, it gets intense. So, wow. Thank you all for putting this together, and I'd like to have you guys do a little thinking about how you might want to work this into some of the work we're doing with each other.
Okay.
Okay? Cool. So one other thing I just wanted to bring up while we're all here, and, except for Lisa, I guess, but we talked, we've been talking about our student reps and how we can really raise their voices and make sure that they're integrated into the work, and, you know, we're kind of on the, hopefully, on the way out a little bit on the COVID stuff, and so maybe figuring out ways to integrate them or at least have that conversation. So I've asked Josh to do a little research or have the team do a little research on kind of what are some standards around, WASDA's done some work on this, and what are some standards that exist around inclusive work with student reps, and how can we best give them opportunity to speak in an appropriate way because they, they really aren't supposed, you know, I think, their job isn't. you know, I think their job isn't to impact our daily decision-making, you know, but to get their ideas and figure out ways to, to bring them into the fold, so to speak. So I think we've got some information coming back soon on that and then we can figure out maybe for the next meeting how to structure the physical space.
Yeah, I think I want to, anytime you come and you get a chance to do it again, you start to, you know, say, okay, so how do we help our students feel safe? You know, I think, I have to think about the first part of pronouncing his name.
Javon.
Javon?
Javon.
Yes. Javon said it really kind of hit me like, okay, well, I don't know what I'm supposed to say in my report. And so that really got us going to say, okay, well, there's got to be models out there that we should be giving our kids, our student reps to say, so hey, here's a report. James does a fantastic job of talking about the expectations, but that's kind of the next layer of our work. And so Tracy's helped us by starting to reach out to WASDA. So what our plan is just to get you that information in like a Friday report, give you a chance to process and dialogue it, and then you guys can talk about next steps of what you like. You always have the ability to customize it, Tacomaize it, but it gives you a, a kind of a baseline to think about from there.
And also, and not just helping them figure out how they rise to their role, but also how do we want to structure it and, you know, physically? So just do some thinking and as soon as we get this information, we can have a conversation and then I'd like to sooner rather than later get them engaged in a way that we're, we've got our new model and we're working on it.
Okay.
Okay, so hopefully in the next week or so.
Yeah.
Get that ready? Okay, yep.
I mean, I think, I mean, I think the students should influence things we think about and do. I mean, they're not voting members, but I do think that their opinions matter so much that I think it should influence how we view things and it helps us to listen better when we have them present, close to us up there, I think. And even at these study sessions, I think inviting them to these functions too.
Absolutely. I think some things for you to, folks to consider is, is how you continue to take student, you each talk to students in different places, right? And so how you bring their voice to your conversation and to your decision-making is a critical element of that. And so I think what we're trying to, for me is, is how do I help systematize a place where they feel safe to give their voice? There are, you have statutory duties that you have to do, right? So how do we galvanize and educate them on those that, you know, just the simple of why are you not a voting member, right? You have to be. And then I think also, how do we safely set up an expectation of their time? Because, you know, in our desire to bring them into everything, we also have to be very clear about what is the minimum expectation so that, they're very busy as you guys know. They participate-
We have some powerhouse student reps.
In different activities. And I, I think that we have to frame that invitation and that's the way I hear it in the spirit of, it's an invitation and what's, would we think is required? And what is it even that we, of course, we would welcome you, but want to honor that you don't have to be here this and there. So I think that's what we're trying to take that next step of really taking a step back and using this as a learning moment for all of us. So we'll, we'll give you that and then you guys can have those discussions.
And I also think that the past three, three years, we've had really fantastic interactions with our student reps and I think COVID gave us an opportunity to rethink how we do this work. And so that's what we want to make sure we're, you know, really being thoughtful about how, how we're going to do this and, you know, is there something specific we do at every meeting rather than just asking for a report? I mean, is there, are there certain things that we can do to make them feel safe and, and heard and engaged in a way that works for them, doesn't just work for us? So that's, so we're getting some other, some other thoughts and I'll give all those to you and then we can figure out what we want to do.
Okay.
Cool. Any other questions or comments? Did you guys want to share tonight about anything in particular before we adjourn?
Just, and because it's still live, I just want to, in case you haven't heard, the air quality, right? It's, it's been extremely problematic. So I just, we, a lot of folks don't get impacted by the air quality. We haven't canceled school or anything, but we've had to cancel events. Those are based off of the Department of Health guidelines of activities. And so it can get kind of confusing, right? Wait, wait a second, wait a second. There's, you can't do a game, but you can do practice. Yes. You can't be outdoor in your competition, but we can move you into an indoor practice. And so we're trying to support kids participating as much as possible, but we're not in a place where we're going to go against the Department Health guidelines. And so we're trying to be both efficient and effective with our communications to families and do it in a timely manner, but we're also trying to wait till the very last minute because we want to see, you know, the air shifts. And I know how problematic that can be. So if you're hearing that from constituents, we will continue to try to work on supporting them. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Does anybody have anything else they want to share? All right, well, thanks for this. It's a rich discussion tonight. Appreciate all the questions, Chelseaa. That was grateful and then Miki too. So we are adjourned until next week.
Go ahead.
Thank you Katie for coming out. Great to see you.
I'd really contribute.